All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to this May 16th Semamish Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. Saad Safabian, Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sudrana Sankara.
Here.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
I am Mark Bachman, and Hisham Alkawad has an excused absence for this evening, and our youth board member Hong Yang Wang is not here yet, so we'll keep an eye out for him. Okay, next is approval of this evening's agenda. We have two items on the agenda this evening: a public hearing about the stormwater code updates, and a presentation on the new transportation master plan. Any comments on the agenda? Okay, how about approval of the minutes from our May 2nd meeting? Any comments or corrections to the meeting from May 2nd? No comments or corrections. We'll call those meeting minutes approved. Next, we have non-agenda public comment, three minutes per person. So as I said, we've got stormwater code updates and transportation master plan. If you've got something other than those two, now's the time. Looks like Mary's going to make some non-agenda public comments.
Hi, Mary Victor here. Moved to the city when it was Redmond, and when I moved into my house, it was Semamish. I've also lived in Tamarack. Tamarack is platted from 1964. I was three years old then, and drainage review wasn't required until, our drainage wasn't required until 1977 and flow control by '79. So this first sheet here, when we were having problems in our area, I didn't know how much building had actually gone on, so I spent about three months going through all 212 parcels on King County and finding out about the houses and how did we get to where we are because we didn't have drainage problems. And then, we did have drainage problems, and it was pretty sudden in 2013. And I found out that there'd actually been 40 houses built by the city, and 20 of those were above me, and 10 were in a landslide hazard area. And then there was an orange house, which is right above me on the sheet, and we still have problems with that one. So I know that I come a lot, and you don't want to listen to me, and you maybe have to watch the three minutes while I go, but I'm actually starting back from where I started in 2015. Because Eric Cliff France, in 2014, when he left, he said, "Ask about something called the stormwater retrofit for Tamarack." So I did, and I got it, and we started having meetings. And this second little sheet is a plan that was done by the city in May of 2016, and then we had to wait for other things. But what I wanted to show you is Tamarack. So Tamarack, this is north, so it kind of looks like an arrowhead because the Native Americans used to own 2/3 of it. And there's south flowing, there's north flowing, and then this little part in here is west flowing. So I kind of tried to fold it basically along what the sub basin would be. It doesn't really agree with this because this was just a draft. But if you count in there, you can see the 20, and the problem is, is this has nowhere to go. And that's really important because if you look at this map, which is the city's fifth of the five ordinances, it actually shows flowing on this little blue line here from the east side to the west side, which is downhill. You'll see the yellow at the bottom. And my house right there, like, is it's right where the yellow thing is. So all the water that comes down there causes us problems. And then Inglewood was platted with, I've never counted the lots, but it's like 6,000 lots, and I think there's only like 647 that have actually built. But Inglewood's right above us. So these two maps work like this. It's kind of like a butterfly with two halves. Inglewood is right on the north. And one of the really important things is Inglewood has lots of critical areas in it. But when they did the stormwater emergency ordinances, and there were five of them from 2013, started the problem. In 2017, we finally adopted new code, there are so many steep slopes shown that you have too many places where people can build, and if they try to put water in, it will cause problems. And this flow all goes to the west, which is left. So anyway, you can see these little lots here. I just wanted to give you an update on what it is to be in a historic plat because that will tumble into critical drainage areas, critical areas in stormwater over and over. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else in the room?
I'm Denise, oh, there it is, Darnell, at 2121 200th Avenue, Southeast Semamish. And I've met with different people, and we have an email to meet with the planning commission, whoever's available, just to talk about wanting an arborist for the city and a forest management person, since we have so many trees. And then, just thinking about the groundbreaking ceremony on Saturday at this area here that they're building for the town center. Oh, which way is it? By Met Market, that way. And just feeling sort of sad about that, that hopefully you go by and see all those beautiful trees and say goodbye to them before they leave. That's what we're sort of doing. And just really wanting to have the city think about going back to the original plan of the town center, where there was going to be like less than 2,100 houses. It was going to be like a smaller version. And to just not destroy all of that beautiful area, especially without having the arborist. And then now there's a new discussion about expanding on Fourth Street and changing from R2 to R16. And I know, like, a couple weeks ago, we were here, and there was a couple here who live on Fourth Street, and they were representing their neighbors and talking about how devastated they are because their area wasn't part of the original plan, and now all of a sudden they're being impacted by development. I really appreciate the planning commission. I feel like you all are very thoughtful, and so I just was hoping you could research that a little bit more as a commission about the R2 changing to R16, preserving some of Fourth Street, and then also really talking some more about how we don't need 2,100 dwellings. And I know right now, they're saying it's all about affordable housing, which all of us who are trying to save the trees believe in affordable housing. And if it was truly affordable, or was going to be habitat for humanity, or really discounted apartments, that would be a reason for it. But what we've talked about so much is it's not really affordable. Yes, it's going to be a little less than Sky Apartments, but it's still going to be quite expensive. So it feels a little bit like fake marketing in a way, because it's still going to be destroying trees, and many people will not be able to afford apartments. And I just think that we have such a special place here, and what we do right now is going to make such a difference. So I'm just sort of pleading with the planning commission to look at yourselves at the Fourth Street area and trying to save some of the trees and rethinking these current plans. And if you're present there at the groundbreaking, I hope you can help say goodbye to all of our beautiful trees and try to remember why Semamish is so special. And that's all. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Denise. Do we have anybody on the call online? No?
Currently, no hands raised online.
Okay, then, let's move on, starting with our old business, which is going to be our public hearing on the stormwater addendum code modifications. And I assume we're going to do a little discussion and review what we talked about last time before we get into the public hearing. I see Wayne. And Lisa, who's going to start?
Hello. Good evening, planning commissioners. I am Lisa Weir, engineering technician in the Public Works Department. I'm joined this evening by Toby Canon, senior stormwater engineer, and the city's consultants, Wayne Carlson and Helen Stanton with AHBL. We're back before you this evening for a public hearing on the Semamish Stormwater Addendum Code amendments. It's a mouthful. And with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne for our brief presentation.
Great, thank you. I don't see Helen on here. I know she's online. Has she been, I guess, elevated to be able to share the slides? I guess while that's occurring, let me just begin by saying, it's great to be back here again. Two weeks ago, we were here to present the city's proposed amendments to the Semamish Addendum to the King County Surface Water Design Manual. As you saw in your, the planning commission packets, we responded to the questions posed by the planning commissioners as well as the public. The responses were included in the, in the planning commission meeting package and resulted in really in one edit where we clarified that individual lot BMPs are intended to manage the drainage from the lot where the drainage is generated. So tonight, we will have a very brief overview of the amendments that we discussed at some length two weeks ago. And again, as Lisa introduced, Toby Cohen, the city's senior stormwater engineer, is also on hand to address any questions that you might have. So next slide. So again, we are presenting five proposed amendments to the Semamish Addendum, the first one being to reduce restrictions on the use of bioretention underdrains. Currently, the city requires the administrative step of a Surface Water Design Manual adjustment for the use of bioretention, bioretention underdrains, when in fact, bioretention underdrains are also allowed in the ecology manual, and felt like this was a way of allowing that without that unnecessary administrative step. The second was to permit dispersion devices within 50 feet of the toe of a steep slope hazard area when approved by a geotechnical engineer or an engineering geologist. Dispersion would be away from the steep slope hazard areas. Next slide. Consistent with the, whoop, consistent with the graphic that we provided within your packet. So this illustrates what we were discussing two weeks ago. Next slide. A third item was application of permanent signage on rain barrels so that homeowners don't unwittingly remove these individual lot LID BMPs when installing air conditioners or other home improvements. Fourth, prohibiting the sharing of LID, individual lot LID BMP facilities across property lines. The purpose of this, again, was to, to make sure that the maintenance obligations and just responsibilities were easily understood and that they occurred. And then fifth, clarifying, whoops, there we go, clarifying the infiltration testing rate procedures and requiring more accurate testing methods for certain small projects where infiltration might be proposed. Next slide. So again, we were here at a study session two weeks ago. This evening would be a public hearing, and we are hoping to initiate a first reading with the city council at a public hearing on June 4th. Next slide. So we are intending to, you know, reserve most of the time that you might have for Q and A, but obviously, your options here this evening would be that the planning commission recommend the city council move to adopt the proposed amendments to the Semamish Addendum to the King County Surface Water Design Manual as presented this evening. Secondarily, recommend that the city council move to adopt the planning commission, to adopt planning commission modified amendments to the King County, or to the Semamish Addendum, to the King County Surface Water Design Manual. Or third, recommend that the city council do not adopt the proposed amendments to the Semamish Addendum to the King County Surface Water Design Manual. So that is the extent of the presentation. Again, we provided a fairly large question and answer, response, comment, comment response matrix in your packet. And Toby, Lisa, Audrey, Helen, and I are here to address any questions you might have.
Thanks, Wayne. And thanks for your efforts responding to our questions. I think that is pretty effective to do that ahead of time. I hope everybody had a chance to look at the Q and A, the written portion of it. So just a reminder for everybody, we'll ask questions of these, of Wayne and whoever can answer the questions. Then we'll do public hearing, then we'll do a motion and some discussion. And so that's kind of the order of business. So does anybody have questions that Wayne or one of the other folks can answer? Go ahead, John. Are you feeling guilty for not, for nobody having anything? So go ahead.
So I wanted to go back to Mike Bresko's questions and his research, learn a little bit more about the dispersion at the toe, toe slope, and get Lisa and Toby's thoughts and insights on why that amendment was proposed, and maybe even hear a little bit more from Mike on his thoughts.
Thank you. Toby Canon again. I'm the senior stormwater engineer with the city, and worked closely with Lisa to kind of craft some of these elements of the amendment. And this one lands in my court in terms of, you know, having prepared it, sought out the reason. But this came about in response to, you know, a couple occasions where development proposals could have proposed reasonable dispersion within 50 feet of a toe of a slope, and recognize that the provisions within our code didn't allow that within the Surface Water Design Manual. So there's a, you know, the occasional and isolated case where that makes sense, and it represents probably the best BMP, low-impact development BMP. So we're essentially establishing, you know, a framework that would allow it to be considered with the geotechnical engineer's recommendation. I think one of the keys here to recognize is that this is a very isolated consideration, if you will, but I think that intent is to allow, you know, the best possible BMP that would kind of advance the ultimate goals of the stormwater program, which is, you know, kind of do no harm. And we look at that from the standpoint of, you know, avoid problems, and then when possible, minimize them, and then mitigate for them. So this kind of falls in line with that overall thinking. And I think, you know, some of the information that was presented today through comment, those are situations, frankly, where a geotechnical engineer certainly wouldn't recommend that happen, and the city similarly wouldn't recommend approving it. So I think there's a fair amount of restrictions on allowing this kind of thing to advance. Again, it is expected to be a pretty limited use, but it does have its place, and we want to allow for that.
Go ahead, Mike.
Toby, I appreciate that. What I don't understand is the benefit overall to Semamish, to the residents of Semamish. It feels, from that, a little bit of the research that I did, like it does open up, you know, some areas that could be a little bit risky, or that would require, you know, quite a bit of both staff time and, you know, cost in terms of geotechnical engineers and so forth. And so, you know, for these isolated cases, I wonder if it's really beneficial overall to accept the amendment as proposed.
I think one thing I would point out is, if there are steep slopes on a piece of property, a single-family home that would be developed, for example, in that situation, the applicant would be expected to get a geotechnical engineer. So that cost is incurred regardless. The situation, an example that I can point to is, you know, this individual had maybe a 20-foot slope in the back of their yard, you know, largely wooded, and at the toe of it, it flattened out to a grass lawn, maybe 70 feet. We, they wanted to propose, you know, basic dispersion in a 50-foot slope path, but weren't able to do that. So that kind of set them down a path of, you know, evaluating a series of less effective BMPs. The risk to that slope was negligible, but nonetheless, it wasn't, it was simply just not allowed by code. So ultimately, to kind of answer your question, you know, how is this good for Semamish? It is, you know, in that situation, you know, better BMP, better solution to treating stormwater. And it's, you know, a cost-effective way of building something that allows, you know, it's consistent with what the expectations are within our code, which is, you know, try to, for the most part, disperse runoff and try to minimize those, you know, point source of, you know, discharges.
Anybody else have questions? Go ahead, John.
So Toby, to clarify a little bit, so in these very limited situations, the building's probably going to go ahead, what I'm hearing you say is, the construction's probably going to go ahead anyway, but the engineered solution would be different and possibly suboptimal. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct. The way these BMPs are looked at, there's a sequence of preference, if you will. The first one is always full dispersion, you know, the assumption is you've got, you know, just native woodland or something where you can disperse flow. The second highest priority is infiltration. Then it goes down to basic dispersion, and steps down from there. So, you know, these, the situations come to mind when, you know, somebody applies for a permit for a remodel or a new single-family home, for example. And we've got to go through this sequencing, or evaluate the sequencing that the applicant goes through. And oftentimes, you get down to the, you know, the tail end of these things, and they're, you know, the effectiveness diminishes with each step in terms of being able to, you know, deconcentrate runoff. So that, you know, this is a preferred method when the, you know, the ground surface is, you know, appropriate to it. But generally, when you're looking down that list, as you know, we're doing things like perforated downspouts that, you know, introduce a little bit of water into the, into the ground, but really don't do much to mitigate the over deep flows. Other things we can do are, you know, just standard dispersion items, you know, from a downspout onto the grass. But again, those are much, much less effective. So, you know, the goal is to try to open up, you know, the, the best solution to these handful of cases that we see every year.
Saad, did you have a question?
Toby, can you elaborate on a couple of things and remind us? One is, what is the current buffer zone from 50 that you're suggesting under the amendment? What is, what is the current guidelines?
Could you repeat that?
What is the current buffer zone guidelines? Right now, you're proposing, the staff proposes to amend the, and recommends 50-foot buffer zone. What is the current situation?
The 50-foot buffers established through the Critical Areas Code. One of the items, I think on page 65 of the add-on in the agenda, includes some references there. And there is a provision within the code to allow construction within 50 feet. You know, there's obviously, you can have exceptions to that, but certain activity is exempt from those exceptions. What we're proposing is that, essentially, this is one of those, one of those exemptions. So, you know, the buffer would effectively be established by the geotechnical engineer's recommendations. This is, you know, anytime there's a desire to relax a buffer, it asks to come with, you know, some consultants, you know, some professional opinion to substantiate that. And this would be no different in that case. But, you know, the reality is, it's typically, you know, a minimum of 15 feet is what I've seen. I think Bellevue has a little more clarity in terms of articulating that, but that's generally how it's approached.
But my question was that what is the existing City of Semamish guidelines in respect to the 50? Is that 20? Is that 50? Is that 60? What are we changing from into 50?
It currently is 50.
So the amendment doesn't change that number?
No. What the amendment allows is construction within that 50 feet. Just to be clear, we're not, you know, the, the existing buffer, if you will, that exists through the Critical Areas Code, we're not proposing to change that. What we are proposing to change is allowance within the Surface Water Design Manual Addendum, obviously. It would be more consistent with that Critical Area Code, which has that kind of narrow exemption to the 50-foot buffer requirement. So we're, we're just trying to align with that and remove any, any daylight that exists between those two.
And what is the definition of a steep slope in respect to this amendment?
With this particular application, I think it's identified, you know, 40% over at least 20 feet. And we would only be allowing for, you know, those exceptions in less than 20 feet. If the slope's longer than that, we wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowing for an adjustment.
So this amendment would change those numbers as far as definition of a slope?
No. Again, we're not changing any of the numbers. What we're doing is essentially, we're taking the allowance that exists within the Critical Area Code and essentially repeating that, you know, within a specific circumstance, dispersion within the King County Surface Water Design Manual. But again, the application of that is articulated by the Critical Areas Code, is a steep slope, which is over 40%, but not more than 20 feet tall. So that, that would be the allowance. If there's a steep slope, for example, that's over 30 feet, over 20 feet, you know, 30 feet tall, we would not amend that.
And if I could, and if I could jump in for just one second to add maybe a little clarification, there, in, in, in steep, in steep slope areas within these 50-foot buffers, there are a variety of uses that are currently allowed with, with recommendation of a geotechnical engineer. If in fact, the, the buffer is not reduced below 15 feet, like Toby was saying. So, but, but the difference with the dispersion is, it currently reads that it's specifically prohibited. So the geotechnical engineer, even if it is safe and is the best design solution, can't do that. So essentially, with dispersion at the toe of slope, what, what city staff is asking and is suggesting is that, that the same kind of provisions that other uses, whether they're structures or whatnot, that, that can be allowed to occur within that 50-foot buffer, be also applied to a dispersion device, as long as it's safe, a geotechnical engineer, and the, and, you know, and through city staff review, you know, confirms all of that.
Thank you, Wayne. That's exactly what I was meaning to say, so.
Toby, did I hear you right, that the City of Bellevue's buffer zone, instead of 50, is 15? Going from 15 to 50?
No, what Bellevue does is, and I think David Pyle could confirm this, but they just have a little more clarity in terms of what they would allow a buffer to be reduced to within the sense of a steep slope. They also handle it a little differently in that I think top and bottom are characterized differently. One is a setback, and the other is a buffer. So each municipality handles a little bit different, but I brought that up simply as an example that, that is, that has a little more clarity in terms of direction about what could be allowed within that typical buffer.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ajay.
Thanks, Commissioner. So I have a question on the situation where we, we require an approval from the geotechnical engineer, and the geotechnical engineer is going to come and give some earthwork concern, concern which, which basically says that we, we cannot follow the dispersion in a particular area. Have you seen that kind of situation in any of the cities around? I know that none of the other cities have a plateau-like situation like we have, but then, have you seen such a situation?
Where we get specific recommendations where they don't allow it?
Yeah, where they don't allow that. Where they, we are generally applying everywhere, but, you know, of the, we have applied it for 39 of these places, but we're not going to apply it over here because of...
Yeah, and it, these are, each, each report, if you would, would be episodic. You know, somebody comes in with a specific development proposal. So there is no, no blanket report per se, but, and the reality is, if somebody hires a geotech and says, "You can't do this," they're not going to submit a report to the city saying that. But to your point... But to your point, you know, a broader question of are there areas where this isn't allowed? The answer is absolutely. You know, I know areas in Kirkland, for example, where, you know, geotech's flat out told, you know, individuals that you can't do anything near this slope, for example. Much less, you know, screwing around with stormwater and groundwater. Just not, not a viable candidate site. So that, that type of dialogue will happen with every project and it does happen with every project.
Does, does weather change this over a period of time? We say that, yeah, it is okay. They think it's not okay. We say it's okay. And then we get a, a season when there's too much rain or too much this one and we have to go back and we have to review it to tell that, okay, this is now off limits?
I've not seen a situation like that. You know, this, you know, the geotech looks at this kind of longitudinally more so than, you know, any of the other disciplines. You know, the, the soils have been put down for all intents 10,000 years ago, the last ice age. So they're very cognizant of, you know, long, long, long-term stability. And if they see any signs contrary to that, you know, it's tantamount that they inform of that. The other thing I'd point out too is our erosion hazard area definition includes a requirement that those types of long-term instabilities are characterized individually. And we're looking purely at a steep slope, which is just, you know, height and slope level. So in those cases where, you know, I mentioned, we might see some history of, you know, instability hundreds of years old or thousands of years old. We wouldn't be permitting anything. The geotech wouldn't be recommending it.
I see. I see. So my primary concern was about the word, then we, the phrase that we said that, you know, if it's earthwork, then we have to look at it. In my head, I was struggling to figure out what is the definition of earthwork that people can quickly understand and say, yep, this is the thing. What you're telling me is that that is, that's usually, you, you cannot box it down like that. It's not a clean, easy definition. They'll have to come, they'll have to look at that. And this is still dependent on like thousands of years of glacial move on the earth. So it, it's not an easy answer. It's not an easy definition. We just have to take what the, what the geotech engineer will have to tell at that point in time. And it's not easy to define.
Precisely. Yeah. Every site, like I said, we get a 50-page report. You know, they go out, do soil borings and test pits and characterize the soil. There's a wealth of information. We've got stacks of these in City Hall, obviously. But, you know, going through that information, you know, that is, that is the professional's role.
Got it. Got it. So, so there could be two parcels that looks similar to a, a steep slope. One of them may be fine. The other one may still have a problem. That 50-page report that you're saying is going to answer that point to tell one owner that you are allowed to do it and the other owner that you, to say that you're not going to do that.
Yeah. In fact, we have a project now where there's one owner and two properties. And one lot looks good and the other one doesn't. So, you know, that's, that's the value is it's your technical work.
Got it. Thank you.
Sura, do you have any, any questions? I don't either. Okay. Toby, Wayne, Lisa, anybody else that's still on there? Thank you for presenting. Really appreciate it. And we're going to move on to our public hearing. Okay? So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for public comment. Does anybody want to make? Here, I'm going to do it formally. Since I have my lovely gavel. Does anybody want to make public comment about this consideration? Anybody in the room? Mary's making her way up to the podium.
I won't need my stuff. Hi. Mary Victor, Sammamish and Tamarack since 2000. I first want to say that I totally love almost every staff member that I know. And I don't know everybody at the city, but I think we have really excellent, terrific staff. I know Toby has a PE background. I think he used to work for Parametrics. Lisa Ware has, she's been at the city longer than I've been talking. She's the first person that told me, you know, the people look at their little lot and then we need to know the area. So the city does need to know the area, which is why the maps and the data that I work with are so important because it's really all from the city. It's not from me. This is super loud. And then Stephanie Sullivan was doing development review. Now I have no sound at all. I don't, okay. Stephanie Sullivan was doing development room and then she moved to stormwater and she's really great. In fact, I would say she gets top marks for being able to take input from people like me and being able to write it down. And then I've seen her where she'll go and change the input based on things. So one of them is when the city did the five emergency surface water ordinances, I believe one of their attorneys wrote the word deleterious. I didn't know what that meant, so I had to look it up and it means damaging to health. So landslide hazards are damaging to health. You can have people and property. In the pictures that I sent, one of the concerns I have is this landslide that occurred in 2013, that was about three dump trodlocks of dirt, which means it could cover a kid. It could cover people playing. It could cover a person and kill them. It could cover a deer. It's, it's really a lot. And we don't want like smaller unraveling. We don't want any earth movement. So it's really important. So one thing I am going to tell you is I've really fought for this code for a long time. And on this critical drainage areas map that I gave you, which is the landslide hazard drainage plus the drains to area, we went through four or five years with lots of public input to get this. And you'll notice there's a little red area that's shaped just like Tamarack. And there's a little red area that's shaped just like Inglewood, but lying uphill from the parkway. There are special requirements for those areas. And also I don't know what page it's on in the thing, but there's a tree that shows drainage. It says for standard, you can build up to 2,000 square feet. If you're in a critical drainage area around a lake, you can build up to 500 square feet. If you're in a landslide where I think Toby lives and he's been talking about just over it and you've got that big forested area, that's 200 feet. But if you're in Inglewood or Tamarack, you don't get to do stuff with zero square feet because we're older plats. We didn't have the facilities. They've been built, built. All the easy lots are built. And if you even do little things above you are tracking people down. So I think when somebody asked about, are there places that you can't do it? Yeah, in Kirkland and other cities, there are places. I would suggest if you want to do any of these things for the number two or even the number five, they can just not apply to Inglewood. We have code now that says if you're in the Inglewood or Tamarack historic plats, the city defined in 2013, a historic plat was one before 1977 because we really can't take anymore. And the little drawing that they added to show the dispersion, not from the top of the toe slope, but from the toe, that's actually describes my lot. So when you look at these, this is the steep slope. This is the toe of the slope. This is within 50 feet. And the city was like, yeah, you should be able to infiltrate the water. Well, we tried. We even built trenches. We, we had to turn the pipe because the flow was so high. And it just, it doesn't carry anything. All the moles actually came up and died on the surface because they were getting drowned by when you put new facilities in. My playground that everybody used to play on, it literally started sinking and tipping. And we're like, we can't have that anymore. And so then there's just this outflow and yeah, it disperses over a wide area called my yard, my playground, the pedestrian pathway that we walk through. I'm at the bottom of the slope. I'm the last one. I'm the one with the steep slopes. My house is fine. My house was built in 1995, 96. If you look at the rain data, which I've collected, it's actually the rainiest years were from 1996, from like 94 to 96, 98. There were no problems because I had neighbors that lived there. A lot of people have lived on the street for a long time. The problems occurred when all those yellow and, all those yellow lots in the, the map I gave you that was folded, 40 homes, 20 above me, 10 in the landslide hazard area. A lot of them would build to 1,999 square feet. So they'd just be under the 2,000-square-foot threshold for drainage review. Okay? The other thing I want to speak to, so please, don't, don't allow these changes to be in Inglewood or Tamarack, particularly with regard to steep slope. And Inglewood has more, Inglewood is just crazy. It has all these layers of steep slopes. So they even have smaller lots. Their lots are 25 feet by 100 feet because it was plotted in 1889. Not so everybody could build on one, just so people could define the area that they lived in. So the, I, I guess the other thing is, is just, we could put the water in the ground below us and our poor little neighbors right next door, the next two houses below us, they would end up with it. That slope's about 15, 17%, so it could fit in the thing. We just, we don't want to have those discussions in our area. We've, we've already been built too much. We don't have the infrastructure that's supposed to be there. It says you're supposed to have adequate infrastructure by the time of occupancy. It's not there. It's the hard lots left. And in fact, you're not even supposed to be building in the critical areas. So if you have a lot that's fully in a landslide hazard area, mine's half in, half out, you shouldn't be building in those. So those are what we want the TDRs to go to Town Center or other places for. And a lot of those have trees. Some of those lots have 40, 50 trees. And what's happening is they get cleared to build one house. The geotech report isn't strong enough. They didn't identify things. They didn't look at things. And the lot will sit there for one, two, three, five, seven. We just had four lots finish after, started in 2013. They just finished in 2024. There's another lot that took seven years because they kind of ran out of money. There's one that's been sitting now for three years and it's just this great big foundation. The trees have been wiped out. The stormwater isn't put in. I don't know how they're going to do it. They're going to go on septic. I don't know how they're going to do it. We just, we can't have any more of that in our area. So tonight, my non-agenda comments started with Tamarack and the problems that we've had. I have no problem with staff. They are super good. They are super great people. But we've had enough change in staff. They haven't seen the things that we've had to come back with year after year after year because we've had to wait. Like I tried to get the geo-hazards done in 2019, 2020. And I was told the critical areas, we won't have money till 2024. So that's why you still see me hanging around and speaking so much. So please exempt Tamarack and Inglewood if you have to take the code anywhere else. It doesn't make sense. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online?
We have one hand raised. Mr. Stigney, I'm going to promote you now.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Staff Consultants. Good job on this overall. I am not nearly as deep on this as I am in land use, housing and all that specificity, but I do follow this somewhat and have over time. In general, I agree with your topics one and three and five. And on topic two, about, you know, dispersion setbacks and geotecs, I had some of the same questions that a couple of planning commissioners asked. I really enjoyed both Toby Keenan and Lisa Ware consultants bringing in the overall specificity to this. Now, I can only use layman's terms, but if, if a slope is too tall, this does not apply. If there's other standards, it does not apply. But there are some cases where the outcome would be better doing this than having one blanket code that applies in all cases. So it really, to me, in, in my words, it comes to allowing flexibility for optimal outcomes when the circumstances are correct to apply that flexibility. Taking a slight twist at a few meetings the last year, especially Community Development Director David Pyle said some similar things to the no disturbance zone in Sammamish. Most of the time it's correct to leave that as no disturbance. But with the right science, there may be times where some use could actually improve it. So the thing I'm trying to say is I agree with some latitude when on-the-ground circumstances would warrant a better outcome than not allowing that to happen. On your topic number four about LID facilities, I will admit I may have missed this in the main packet. So if I did, I will admit that upfront. But I agree with not sharing between adjacent properties. But I suggest that there be some language put in that this doesn't apply when there's a regional stormwater solution. Now, so far, I'm not aware of a regional solution. Maybe there is. I know Town Center has talked about it. I don't think it's happened. But if there is a regional approach, and maybe I'm not using the right word, I think that might be a reasonable alteration to this as opposed to, I can understand two neighbors. I always come back to digging a trench. When you've got a, a lot of utilities, when you, when you want to install on a project, it's my opinion, if you can, is you want to hire one contractor to do all of it so that if something goes wrong with, with one of the lines, they can't point to somebody else and say, he did it and she did it. I could see the same thing happening with two or three neighbors in a shared LID approach. Oh, it's not mine, it's them. So I concur with this. But if there is a planned regional approach, I'd suggest having a, a exception for that. And then staying in general on stormwater sort of issues, but morphing a little into CAO, keep an open mind to reassessing regulations where they're appropriate and potentially making them stronger where they're not sufficient or weaker where they are sufficient. And I'm going to give just a single example of what I'm talking about. In, in the Town Center, for example, the, the Ebright Creek, Inglewood, no, Thompson Basin, I always get this mixed up. That is level three for flow control and water quality. Agree. But a large part of Town Center and much of the Inglewood Basin and George Davis Creek is level three for frequent flooding. I don't agree. That's all glacial outwash soil. I think level three, for example, is excessive for that area and level two is totally appropriate. Wonderful protection, especially after the 2015 and 2021 changes to ecology and surface water in level two where there isn't frequent flooding. The thing I'm trying to say is, why don't we match regulation to what is optimal protection, but not excessive? And then let cards fall where they may and, and keep the options open for the right kind of development that the community needs and wants and have incredibly good protection, just not excessive. Okay? That's all I had tonight on this topic. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else online? No? So I'll close the public, public hearing. Would anyone on the commission be motivated to make a motion so we can talk about this a little bit more? Don't all jump in at once.
I'm moving. Got to start somewhere. So I, I move the, the commission recommend the changes as recommended by staff and consultant.
I'll second that. Okay. It's been moved a second to recommend to City Council, the changes as recommended by the staff. Any discussion about this?
I, I have one point I completely forgot about. I'm so sorry to do this to all of you. I just want to clarify that if, this will apply even to impervious surface construction, right? It's not just about plots and other things. If I were an owner and I'm at the top of it and I want to build a, like a public deck where I'm going to have parties and parties over weeks, I would still be subject to the same rule. Am I right about that?
That's correct. Yeah. These rules are, there's thresholds depending on where you live in the city that trigger new and trigger some of these requirements. But none of these are retroactive to existence. It's all triggered by new development work, whether that's remodeling or, you know, holding new construction.
Got it. Thank you.
Other comments?
Toby, I wanted to confirm something. I thought you said earlier that on the, in looking at potential sites for this, there was a pretty significant limitation on the length of the slope that could be subject to this. It's quite short.
Right. Yeah. It's, it is geared toward, and again, this is to be consistent with the exception that currently exists in our Critical Areas Code. I think it's a 20-foot maximum height, which, you know, obviously there's a lot of hills in Sammamish, all of them that, but... of hills in Samamish, all of them that, but it is intended to have a fairly limited application. And the intent is, you know, as an example, towards situations as presented to public comment.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll make one. So I'd actually jotted down two possible motions. One, basically the one that John had proposed and made, and then one that would have eliminated the Amendment Two, which we've discussed quite a bit. And I changed my mind based on Toby, what you were saying, and John, how you summarized, which basically says that by accepting that amendment, that we in fact can have better solutions. And they're contingent upon, you know, proper study by geotechnical engineers and so forth. And, you know, recognizing that that would be on a case-by-case basis. So it feels like, you know, with all due respect, you know, Mary, to her concerns, which I very much agree with and understand, this feels like we have the correct kinds of protections, if you will, to accept Amendment Number Two as, as proposed by Staff.
You're making an amendment to the, because you said you changed your mind. That's why I'm asking that question.
Well, I had, I had two. I had two motions prepared. One would have said to accept what Staff said, accepting Amendment Number Two. And I seconded the motion that John made, which is accepting all of them, including Amendment Number Two.
So what is on the table to move, to vote on?
Right now, the motion is to recommend as, as presented to the City Council.
And I agree with that. I, I seconded it.
So I will, I will be, look at this, we'll have a little tiny bit of controversy on the Planning Commission. Oh my goodness. Get the, get the media in here. First, I would say that I really appreciate Toby's comments and Wayne's presentation. I, I hear you. I think you're doing the right thing in recommending something you think is, is a good idea. My hesitation is that I struggle to be convinced that something like this, which sounds perfectly legitimate while we're sitting here in council chambers and all talking very nicely together, that there will not be an opportunity for people to take advantage. Rules, you know, in particular, I say this because, again, we've, we've repeated several times, and you guys have repeated several times, this is a very limited number of cases. So is it really worth it to take the risk for unintended consequences for so few instances of, you know, maybe it is the best solution, but it also might not be a good solution in other cases? And now that we've put it on the books, as it were, then people can say, look, you can't tell me no because it says so here. And they'll go find a geotechnical engineer who will write up a report that says they can do it. I've seen that kind of thing happen frequently. I'm just, I, I would suggest that, my point of view is that the rest of these feel fairly straightforward and easy to understand. This one, based on the conversation, the questions last time, this time, perhaps needs a little bit more discussion. And it could be as simple as we, I, I don't understand yet how it works, right? It could still be the best idea in the world, but I'm just not quite understanding it yet. Or maybe it's just simply that we should consider recommending that the City Council asks more questions. Hopefully, they'll look at these videos and, and pay attention to this and ask some more questions anyway. Because it feels, I'm just not comfortable that it couldn't be used against us at some point, especially when you counterbalance that with what we've described as, I think, very limited number of times when it is actually the right solution. So I always feel like we should be cautious in government in moving forward with change until we're very convinced that that change is inherently stable and going to do what we want. And I'm not quite convinced on this one. Now, having said that, I would not vote no on the rest of it because of that. But I do want to point out that I, that's why I asked some of those questions last time, and I remain concerned about how this could be applied or how there may be unintended consequences that we haven't thought of and that we are only talking to ourselves in our silo on one side of the table. We're all on one side of the table essentially, and we don't know necessarily what the other side of the table might come up with. So that was my concern to begin with, and I still have that concern. So for what it's worth, that's my perception of it. The rest of them, I think, are fine.
So are you, are you, are you voting no to the proposal?
I, Sayad, I haven't heard anybody else share my concerns, so I don't think it would be of any value for me to try to amend, but I do want to point out that that's, that's a concern I have. That's the reason for our discussion.
Or you could make an amendment and see if you get a second.
Yeah, and if nobody seconds it, then I obviously don't know what I'm talking about. Go ahead, Ajay.
So I, I really caught, caught to the point that you said you could get a geotech engineer who would say what you want to say, if you want to change it. Can we, can we mandate that the city decide a particular geotech engineer who will do that thing? We cannot do that because then, that, that's a concern. Because if anybody can do it, I can pay to get somebody to say what I would like to say. And the science is still the best science that we know, which is not the defined science, which now brings us back to our original problem. So we can't mandate that? I mean, they cannot add language?
Yeah, I think I, I will try to answer that and just saying that my, my understanding is that a professional engineer who's registered as a professional engineer has a professional obligation to do the right thing, live up to their professional standards of service, standard of care. And so you would assume that a professional engineer would absolutely do the right thing. But who's paying that professional engineer? And how much interpreting and bending of the rules can be done to say what you want to say? And what if it works except in certain conditions where there's more rainfall than normal? I mean, it just, this is one of those topics that feels like it gets into the weeds pretty, pretty far. Maybe that's an appropriate way to say it, but, you know, and it's very situational, very specific to the, what's, what are they going to build? What's going to be built in the future? What's the situation? I mean, there's just, there's a lot of ifs. And so I feel like there should be some more discussion about this. I would, I would argue against myself in saying that other people do allow it. So perhaps that is good evidence that it's acceptable. But boy, if I was living downhill from a slope and somebody wanted to dump a bunch of water in their backyard that was right behind my fence, in fact, I kind of actually am in that situation, I don't know that I'd be super comfortable with that because where's that water going to end up eventually? Feels an awful lot like it's going to end up in my backyard. Now, maybe the alternative solution is worse, but I don't know that, right? And so that's why I'm not super comfortable with this. Any other comments?
So the question to the team, if, again, this may be a bad example, but when they were constructing Black Nugget area in Issaquah, didn't they face the same kind of concern, considerations? It's a pretty steep slope. It's a, it hangs off as it comes down towards the Home Depot area and all of those things. So wasn't that considered at that point in time? We would have, we would have, we might be in the same kind of situation as that would have been. Did we, do we have any learning from that?
You're talking about the very large timber leg wall hitting all up the end, you know? My understanding is a lot of the issues that they're facing with that, some of them arose from the fact that the significant, significant amount of the material that's there was actually imported from the Mercer Island LID project back when, you know, in the nineties, when they cut the new I-90 freeway through there, and that was one of the deposit sites for that. So I don't know how much of that is actually tied into native material. And that's a, from a geotech perspective, a pretty significant differentiation, but again, in looking at the very narrow limitations of what we're proposing versus the scale of that, you know, that project, problems that they are facing, which, you know, having read about it, I can only say that I'm aware of it. But, you know, I, I would argue that the, that's kind of an apples and oranges comparison. That's not to diminish concerns, but it, you know, markedly different problems that they're facing relative to what we could be contemplating with what we're proposing. So I think, you know, I don't know if that gives you any, you know, peace of mind, but that is a, a different beast, thankfully.
I think we, I, I think we basically put peace of mind to the side when we come into Planning Commission meetings.
Point taken.
John, did you have something?
Yeah, just hopefully kind of close this off maybe. So would it be accurate to say that geotech reports, engineering, all sorts of these technical reports that Staff review are not automatically approved? That they're often rejected, redlined, whatever?
Routinely, there's comments made about, you know, whether it's, you know, for example, infiltration rates, you know, please revisit this type of soil. There's, I mean, I would guess eighty plus to ninety percent of the reports, at least one comment. So these are by no means rubber stamped.
Can I jump in here real quickly? This is David Pyle, Department of Community Development. So I, I just want to note for you all that your public work staff are recognized as being some of the most thorough reviewers in, in the, the industry. We, I regularly hear from builders, like, why are they so thorough? So I just want you to be aware of that. It, it is true, true, and I do hear it all the time.
Somebody's probably baking you brownies for making that comment. Okay, I'm going to call a question. Let's, let's vote. It's been moved and seconded to recommend the proposed changes to the City Council for approval, including one through five, so everything that's on the list. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Thank you. That passes. Okay, there's a little bit of controversy for the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment, not about the, the agenda item, but about complimenting Staff and the Consultants. They did a great job, not only as far as the Staff Report, more important for the first time, I see that they recognize the comments and the question and they answer it. This was really refreshing, and I would hope that in the future, we would have the same kind of a response from Staff and the Consultant when we have an item on our agenda. It was really nice job.
Yes, I, I would definitely like to follow up on Commissioner Sayad's comment. This has been, this has not been an easy one. You've not had the Commission have to labor through this decision as you have, but you made it very easy for us through all the hard work that you put in for this thing. So for the Staff and for the Consultants, thank you so much. Thanks for all your work.
All right, now you're baking several people brownies.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Let's move on to a new business topic for this evening, which is, well, maybe it's a, it's listed as old business? I think it's new business, is a discussion and introduction about the first-ever City of Samamish transportation master plan, which I think we could have a lot of conversation about. So let's go ahead and dive in. And who's going to, I, I admit, I'm not sure who's going to start the presentation. Is it Lindsay or who's, who is it?
I can jump in really quickly. Well, Lindsay's pulling it up. So good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the time this evening. We're really excited to present a few updates for the draft transportation master plan or TMP. Lindsay will be presenting this evening, and we are, Greg and I are both here to answer any questions as well. Whenever you're ready, Lindsay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Lindsay Channing. I'm the transportation planner for the city. We are coming back to you this evening. We did come at the beginning of March and do a very high-level intro presentation to the Planning Commission, letting you and the public know our plans and how we were working towards creating a transportation master plan for the city. So this evening, there's a few things that I'd like to go over in a little bit more detail than we did last time, leading up to us coming back to you in June with a draft document. So tonight, I'd like to briefly discuss the connection between the transportation master plan and the comprehensive plan, the comparison between the 2015 and the 2024 transportation elements that we will be adopting by the end of this year, the significance of having a transportation master plan, showing you an outline of the transportation master plan document itself, so the chapters and the proposed subheadings that we've been working on and gathering information and creating the plan under, what our next steps are moving forwards to the end of 2024. And then ending this presentation with just a discussion with Planning Commission. We have some questions that we provided in the Staff Report and again, are going to be shown in this presentation to just kind of get some thoughts moving so we can hear Planning Commission's first questions, concerns, and whatnot regarding our transportation master So to start, this is a great slide. We showed this to everyone back in March, but I think it does a really good job of illustrating overall how comprehensive planning works and where the transportation element and the transportation master plan falls within that. So the transportation element of the comprehensive plan addresses the transportation vision, goals, and policies. And then the transportation master plan is really your more functional plan, the strategic framework that will guide those transportation decisions and our investments. We'll be adopting the transportation master plan by reference into Volume Two of the comprehensive plan, which is a change from what we have done previously. And all of this helps inform our capital improvement plans, that are six-year plans that get approved and relooked at on an annual basis for the next six years of capital planning. So briefly, in twenty, the 2015 comprehensive plan transportation element has two volumes, which is standard for most elements of our comprehensive plan. Volume one is the goals and policies, and volume two is the background supporting information, meeting the Growth Management Act requirements with things such as LOS standards and our unconstrained project list to point out kind of the really big items that GMA requires as supporting information for the transportation element. Moving forward, with our 2024 update, our Volume One continues to have the goals and policies. And our Volume Two, as I briefly mentioned on the last slide, is going to be incorporated with a dynamic link. So our plan is to have an executive level summary as the Volume Two and then linking to our transportation master plan. This is going to be more comprehensive. It's going to be multimodal focused. It's going to have vast considerations of different potential funding options that we can use to maintain and improve our transportation network throughout the city, again, for all modes of transportation, not just the vehicle traffic. It will meet all requirements of the traditional Volume Two for the Growth Management Act compliance. And also will provide an opportunity for updates outside of the comprehensive plan So as far as the significance of the transportation master plan, our TMP is going to reflect the community input that we've received, going all the way back to 2018 when we were first working on a draft transportation master plan that made it to City Council in 2020 and then was not adopted. It also will advance the city's multimodal transportation vision with this multi, excuse me, multimodal focus. It will include all modes of travel. And as we're still formulating this, because a multimodal level of service is something that's going to be required by the year 2029 for comprehensive planning and from the Puget Sound Regional Council, we will have our baseline of that for certain in our adoption this year. And then our hope and our intent is to further expand on that when we come back and make some tweaks and updates to the TMP next year in 2025. This plan will implement the goals and policies of the transportation element. It will provide the background information about the transportation system and how our goals and policies can move forward. And it will also proactively shape the transportation vision of goals that are described in our city's comprehensive plan. It will also align with the other elements of the comprehensive plan and other city plans. It will be in alignment and inform the transportation element and our larger city goals. And it also, as I mentioned earlier, will help identify priority projects for the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. That's a six-year cycle. It also provides a centralized strategic framework to guide transportation decisions and investments. This will help the city improve how people travel throughout our city. It will- It will provide a prioritized list of projects, programs, and strategies. It will also be consistent, again, with our Growth Management Act. It will provide more transparency with how our transportation network is planned and operated. And then also, this puts us more in line with our neighboring cities of Redmond, Bellevue, and Izua, as they all have documents that are transportation master plans. Redmond has one, and they call it their Transportation Master Plan, and it effectively operates as their background chapter of their transportation element. The city of Bellevue also has a Transportation Master Plan, however, they call it their Mobility Implementation Plan. It's effectively the same thing, and again, is their background element, chapter of their Transportation Master Plan. And then lastly, the city of Izua calls their TMP a Mobility Master Plan, and again, provides that background supporting information that our Transportation Master Plan will be providing. I know this screen is busy. This was also included in the packet, so hopefully everyone was able to take a look at this. I just want to take a moment with everyone see the screen. You'll notice that there are six planned chapters. All of the chapter headings are labeled in bold. Again, we have an executive summary, and then the first main chapter will be the introduction. It'll give the context and background of our transportation system and plan. We'll then move into existing conditions, leading into future conditions, what our travel demand forecasting will look like, future traffic conditions, bicycle pedestrian demand, and then also incorporate transit service and facilities. We did recently adopt a transit plan back in March of this year, and so while that plan will not be input into the Transportation Master Plan in its entirety, it will be summarized and linked with this plan. It also will have a chapter on public engagement, our future transportation vision, including what our vision is for the future, different types of modal networks we could have, and the desire to move towards a complete streets city. And then, again, how our vehicles operate throughout the city and considering other modes of transportation. And then lastly, there's the plan implementation, and this is where that financial aspect of the plan that was pointed out earlier will be addressed. And then lastly, any appendices to support the document will make up chapter seven. As I did mention at the beginning of this, we did come to Planning Commission in March to give a brief introduction. On May 1st, we went to the Parks Commission to give them the same introduction that you folks received in March. I'm here tonight with this update on the progress. Our plan is to be back before you on June 6th with a draft of the Transportation Master Plan, and at that time, we'll walk through in more detail on how to review, but it will be very similar to how review of the Comprehensive Plan elements have gone, and we will be using that Convio system for recording comments that we have been using with the Comprehensive Plan review. Our goal is to be back on July 18th for our public hearing and recommendation at council with you folks at the Planning Commission, so that starting in September, we can go in tandem with the Comprehensive Plan efforts and introduce the TMP, have various work sessions with city council, leading into late fall, the presentation and public hearing, and an adoption of the TMP in December. Since the Transportation Master Plan will effectively become volume two of our Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element and have a lot of those important pieces of the Growth Management Act requirements for our transportation element, we do need to have the Transportation Master Plan, the mouthful I know, adopted prior to the adoption of the comp plan, and that can occur in the same evening, but the TMP needs to be adopted first. And lastly, here are the five thought-provoking questions to just try and get the conversation started that we propose to the commission. I'm not going to read through them. They are in your packet, and if it pleases the chair, I'm going to stop sharing the screen so that we all can see each other, but if at any time you need me to pull this back up, I will. And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Thanks, Lindsay. I especially appreciate that you consider pleasing the chair because you're the only one. All right. Who has questions or comments or discussion items for Lindsay and others? Yeah, let's, let's go around. How about we do that? So we'll start with Said.
Lindsay, thank you very much for your presentation. Let me start with a couple. First of all, just for the record, I sent an email to Audrey this afternoon, and I apologize to her, that is only a few hours before, so I will not, I'm not expecting to get into that level of detail, and Commissioner, they receive a copy of it, about two-page report of some, some comments and suggestions, but let's start with some generalities. I understand that there was a study back in 2020 under the same topic. Can you elaborate on that? What happened? Why that was not adopted? Why we're starting all over again?
I can give a brief overview of that, and maybe then Audrey will want to jump in and fill in the gaps. I was not with the city at the time that the TMP process took place, but my understanding is that that started in 2018, had a very robust public comment period, a lot of work was done, and the consultant at that time was Ferran Pierce, and they had put together their Transportation Master Plan. We had a level of service that was included corridors and not ju, and not just intersections. There were quite a few projects that were necessitated from that type of level of service for the city, and when it made it to the city council, there were a lot of concerns around the immense amount of infrastructure that that could require, and also whether or not that level of service was appropriate. I believe it also questioned our concurrency a little bit at that time as well, so city council at that time chose to halt the TMP, not move forward with it, and we effectively moved into our balanced land use and mobility analysis, EIS work that was done, and through that process, we are back at a loss intersection-only level of service. Audrey, do you have more to add?
Sure. You will find as you start to review the draft TMP that we have pulled components from the draft in 20 that was worked on in 19 and 20, specifically around a lot of the wonderful engagement that, that was done with the community. So that was really valuable, and we'd like to make sure that we're reflecting a lot of that feedback, as well as all the feedback that we've received to date in engagement with the community in this TMP. So the pieces of it that we can use, we will, and the others are not applicable. There has been quite a bit of change in the last five years.
Thank you. Now, my understanding is that the Transportation Plan is a 20-year plan, Comp Plan is 20-year plan, but CIP is a six-year plan, right? So when you come with the final recommendation, I'm assuming that recommendations were 20 years, but CIP has a financial ability or has a, the financing resources to cover those short-term six-year plan? So how are we going to be kind of looking at inconsistency between the 20-year plan and a six-year plan, which probably leads to the suggestion, should we have a short-term plan on a, on Transportation Master Plan and a long-term Master Plan?
Ideally, the, the TMP is both, right? So it'll provide a 20-year look ahead for our required projects that would pertain to level of service and any potential failures there, any projects that are set through our multimodal level of service guidelines, and then, of course, any other projects that we have heard from the community that the city knows that we need, that we're headed in, in one direction in terms of providing more multimodal infrastructure in general. Ideally, this, the six-year capital plan is, is kind of rolls along a 20-year scale, if you will, right? So we have a very good understanding through the TMP of our 20-year project list. Some things might come up here and there, because we can't plan everything as much as we would love to, but we have some programs that can accommodate some projects along the way, and of course, if there's different priorities that may change over time, we can certainly look at that as well. Another thing to keep in mind is the TMP, it is meant to be reviewed often, right? So we'll be reviewing it, of course, whenever we do our Comprehensive Plan updates, as well as those five-year increments in between. There are sections of it, of the TMP that we can take a look at, honestly, any other time. If we are proposing to amend the TMP that would require any of the GMA requirements, there are sections to be amended, it would have to go through our annual docketting process. Other sections can be amended at any time through city council.
Now, the timeline, what I saw in Lindsay's report, it says that the completion of TMP December of this year, and that is a deadline for the Comp Plan too. So since these two critical projects going side by side and along the same kind of timeline, what kind assumptions, how are you going to bring the most important element into this, and that is the land use and the transportation? And the last time, Audrey, if you recall, I brought that issue up, and you said that you're working together with the Comp Plan. So in the, in the process of completing the Transportation Master Plan, you should have some, some assumptions as far as the future land use, which at this point, I'm not sure that time-wise, it would work for the completion of the two documents by December.
We have been working right alongside the Comprehensive Plan. It's been one, one big team throughout this whole process, the last eighteen months or so. So every, every housing and land use decision, we are right at their, right at the table, talking about how that may affect transportation. So it has been one, one process, a little bit different stages along the way, but one, one comprehensive process all the time.
And my last question possibly is that, is there any way that you give us the, the report that you're going to be asking us to, to comment on and all that, and give us enough time to digest what you're saying, right, and only a few days before the next meeting?
We are hoping to be able to release the draft as, as soon as we can. We're finishing up, it's going through internal review right now, and of course, on the fourth, we'll be presenting just what, what kind of comments that we're looking for. Of course, we would love any feedback, but similar to the, the Comp Plan, we're, we'll be looking for comments in Convio, and just, we'll be going through that in the fourth. So hopefully, we'll be releasing the draft right around there, and then we very much look forward to the, the more technical discussions, if that's something that Planning Commission wants to talk about at that time. So hopefully, that answers your question.
And one more, one more comment or question. I didn't hear that much about an issue that I brought to your attention in separate email, concurrency, impact fee, and, and all the level of service. Is that going to be part of the presentation or the material that you're going to send us for review?
Yes, our level of service guidelines, as well as level of service expectations that we currently have around intersection level of service, it's all in the TMP.
How about concurrency?
Yes.
And modeling related to concurrency?
Everything will be in there.
Okay, great.
Yes. In fact, a majority of the, the list, I didn't have an opportunity to read the, the entire list earlier, but I, at first glance, a majority of those items that you provided earlier will be in the TMP, so.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Audrey, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I don't want to break the suspense for June 6th, but I have a question. Can you just help me understand, what is a complete street?
That's a great, great question. A complete street is one that can accommodate all modes of transportation, right? So typically, it's a, it's a roadway for vehicles to travel on, as well as transit, if that's a transit route. It includes typically our, something that our public work standards actually have complete street standards right now, but typically, you'll see a separated planter strip between the curb and gutter of the roadway, and then the, and, sorry, and then the sidewalk. Often, complete streets also include bike lanes. They can be considered protected bike lanes, depending on the speed of the travel lane and, and different things like that. So typically, it's a, it's a road that can accommodate and really prioritizes multimodal level of travel.
Got it.
I just see that Seattle has a lot of examples on this, and they're leaders in the country as far as complete street.
Got it. Great. Definitely look forward to that. I have just one comment in addition to this thing. While, while we are looking at this, and I can see in the future condition that there is future bicycle and pedestrian demand, and future transit service and facilities, and so on and so forth, I, I would really like to, because transportation is, whether we like it or not, going to be the leading, the spearhead of the, of, of the future of how we use, how we work with the environment. Would it be possible for you to talk about how we can improve on our transportation that will help with a green earth idea, reduce pollution, transportation, and so on and so forth, as recommendations for the city? Because if we don't get that out of the TMP, I, I think we will really miss an opportunity to do that for, for a better earth. So can we, can I ask you to add at least, if not a chapter, a section for it?
Yeah, and the, the TMP is, is intended to provide all the, the technical background that supports a lot of the policy work that, that is in the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan. It also provides a strategic framework for the future, right? And so part of what you've seen in various elements, our transportation element, as well as our climate resiliency element of the Comprehensive Plan, are different, different ways that the city can take a look at reducing things like vehicle miles traveled or greenhouse gas emissions. So part of that work will be in the TMP, and part of that, as we strive for more prioritizing multimodal transportation, that, that, that work goes hand in hand. So that, that will be in the TMP. It's on its own chapter, but you'll see it woven throughout the TMP.
Great, I look forward to it like the next Harry Potter novel. Thanks.
John, go ahead.
So first, I want to recognize that you have an incredibly complex project ahead of you. Limited dollars, pretty confined network of streets, particularly arterials, and a huge neighborhood network to figure out how to support. And then, of course, we're this sort of island between major transportation highways like 202 and I-90. We don't have anything immediately. It's a benefit and a liability, I guess. Then you're working with limited dollars. So going back to my comments from the last presentation, better cross-reference in your multimodal stuff with particularly parks, the economic development element did a really good job of kind of cross-referencing, and I really liked their SWOT analysis as well in that, I'm not expecting that to show up in the TMP, but making sure that particularly as we're focused on walking and mobility, that, you know, we figure out neighborhood connections. And then, sort of lastly, and I don't, I don't know exactly how your approach is going to work, and this kind of goes back to a lot of review that happens with building and land use and new construction, since a huge number of our neighborhoods were constructed without sidewalks and other infrastructure, you know, just, so you get a new house on your street, and you get a sidewalk that's just an island, and it's just going to be an island there forever. You know, as, as you look at whatever you consider to be a complete street, considering what's going on in the neighborhood. I happen to live in a neighborhood that has no, well, it has some limited sidewalks. Nobody walks on the sidewalks. They walk down the middle of the street. It's a dead-end street, so I, I know how challenging and complicated that is, but mixing modes in our neighborhoods, rather than maybe trying to separate them every time, I know that police and fire aren't going to want you to put in a bunch of speed bumps to slow down traffic everywhere, but regulating traffic speed, you know, allowing for better, I see Greg kind of nodding there, better pedestrian-oriented stuff, because now we have electric bikes and scooters and stuff just going all over the place crazy. I don't envy the job you have trying to figure that out, but at least step back and look at the neighborhood, and before requiring this one brand-new house to put in Kurgbedder sidewalk with a planting strip, and all the other houses are built out, you know... can we take a bond and somehow use that on that street to improve the street for everyone, not just that one little 50-foot section? So that's my two cents. I'm looking forward to seeing the draft.
Thank you, and just we're very excited. We know it's going to be, you know, a series of great conversations and we look forward to them. There's a lot of regarding, you know, those smaller frontage improvements that can occur in the neighborhood. There's a lot of different approaches that different cities can take. Some of that includes things like flexible standards, creating seams for different types of roadway. So there's a lot of different opportunities that we can talk through as we go through the TMP as well.
Thank you, Lindsay, for an awesome presentation. And Audrey and Greg, thank you. So you guys asked, like, you know, what would commission is thinking about the TMP plan? I am super excited. I'm envisioning a streetcar from one end of 228 to the other end. And I'm excited, thankfully. And I'm so excited about the six-year capital planning because that gives us like a short term, right? Instead of waiting for 20 years, who knows where I will be by that time, right? So I'm excited for that. The couple of questions I have is like, I know like federal grants, we have a lot of grants for transportation, right? So are we looking into any of those to help, you know, augment our funding? And the second one is, are we collaborating with Sound Transit and King County Metro to have a better service planning? Because lots of times I see King County Metro, they have 218 buses and then all of a sudden like, oh, no, no more 218 because we don't have any drivers. So if we can keep, you know, in close relationship with them, it would help us. And the third one is, we see the two-line open from Redmond to Bellevue. And I was trying to take that two-line, I had to take two buses to go there. So, yeah, it was, of course, it's a beautiful train, but for me to take two buses to go there just to test the train, I thought like, oh, this is not useful. So if we can work with Sound Transit and King County Metro, we'll make it a better place. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, and just really quick, we love grants. So anytime you hear a funding opportunity, we'd love it. We actually are presenting a few grant opportunities that are upcoming to city council next Tuesday. So very excited about any opportunities. And I would say the same thing with collaborating with other agencies and cities. It's a really great thing when we can all work together to improve the region. Transportation is one of those things where it's really, we have to work together, right? It's for a greater outcome. We work with the King County Metro and Sound Transit often, both on a broader scale in terms of Lindsey worked with them quite often through the transit plan. And we're working with them right now on a project scale with our Sahalyway corridor plan. So they're great to work with. We also work with our neighboring cities often. So it's really great to see collaboration.
Can I follow up on Sura's question? Audrey, has there been any discussion with the King County Metro to provide some kind of feeder system? Now, the line two of Sound Transit is open, to provide the connection between, let's say, the Park and Ride that we have in here and the Sound Transit there, Redmond Center? Redmond Terminal? The feeder system, the bus feeder system?
Yeah, they are expanding service down 228 with the 269 route and are modifying that to 15-minute headways, which is unbelievably great service. So that's occurring at their next service change.
When is it going to be?
Their next service change, I believe, is the end of August.
Oh, good.
Awesome, perfect, yeah.
Mike, go ahead.
I do have one more question, Audrey. Like, are we, City of Sammamish, do we have any membership within APTA? American Public Transportation Authority?
I am not sure.
Okay.
I can get back, that's a great question. I'll get back to you.
Sorry, it was the question, are we membership with APTA?
Yeah.
Yeah, APTA is not speaking perfectly, that I would concur that Sammamish doesn't have that. But coming from a transit agency just recently, because I've been with Sammamish for five months now and came from Community Transit up in Sammamish County, APTA is typically a membership exclusively for transit agencies. But we could look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay, again, thanks for the presentation, the work you're doing. I echo John's comment, I don't envy you one bit. Got a couple of comments. And on the list of chapters, and you don't need to pull the slide back up. So just, I may have missed this, but if not, food for thought. Existing conditions, I don't think I saw anything about trails. And trails can be helpful for, you know, connectivity. So, and I know that that might not be a super easy thing. So, you know, think about whether there'd be some benefit there or not. The ongoing plans, not knowing what you'll have written, that could be things that, you know, is being worked on right now or the next set of priorities, right? And so it would be helpful to know of the ongoing plans. What is like penciled in, but, you know, haven't been to the shovel ready yet, kind of thing. And related to that, on plans like this, there's a potential that some details or priorities get lost in all of the details. So for example, they're related primarily to vehicular transportation. There's a couple of bottlenecks. And, you know, focusing on those bottlenecks can make a really big difference. And I know that there was some comment about, and maybe Commissioner Safavian made a comment about traffic circles.
Glad that you brought it up. I had a discussion with the council. I actually prepared a pre-design for one of those intersections, Yavin Mine 37 to 228, submitted to the city. Lo and behold, DKS consultant picked it up, finalized my plan and sold it back to the city as their plan.
Glad I gave you an opportunity to jump in there. But, you know, the point is to really be clear about where the priorities are to reduce those bottlenecks. And, you know, not to get to the plan having so much detail that people would lose sight of how bottlenecks are being addressed. And then this is the, you know, the transportation challenge. I guess maybe being able to put in a traffic circle could be a challenge. But a question about the complete streets. Is 228th in front of City Hall here considered a complete street?
228th right in front of City Hall does not have bike lane right in front of it. So that would be the main element that it doesn't have.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, I thought you might say that. But, you know, since that was developed relatively recently in the grand scheme of things, it really, it then failed meeting any kind of complete streets.
Can I answer that question? The answer is no way. And the reason, to the best of my knowledge, complete street definition doesn't apply to arterial streets, collector and below.
Well, be that as it may, what was done with that, the recent upgrades to 228th, I guess, I don't know, maybe not so recent, 10 years or 15 years time travels. And then there's a couple of COVID years in there too. But it actually eliminated the ability to use a bicycle there. And I do a lot of cycling and I don't go across that anymore, you know. So one of the challenges is to take one of those major arterials like 228th, which is really awesome for, with e-bikes and so forth, and being able to convert that. And I have to imagine that would be incredibly expensive. So like John said earlier, good luck, you have a challenge. But, you know, maybe there's some other ways of not necessarily making physical changes to 228th. But, you know, there's other, you know, sort of side streets and all of that that maybe can help tie some things together to enable, you know, e-bike, scooter, bicycle transportation to town center, you know, from the areas that are either, you know, north or south of there. So, yeah, those are the comments I had. Thank you.
But Mike, if you have a streetcar, if you have a streetcar, you don't need bicycles.
I can address your question in regards to trails. It is addressed in the existing condition section. It's under the non-motorized, existing non-motorized section of that chapter. And that includes trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera.
So let me.
One thing, oh, go ahead. I was just going to add also, in addition to that, trails being included, we are looking at ways to prepare multimodal level of service and one methodology to take a look at the pedestrian network and the bicycle network to measure the level of traffic stress. So it's the comfort level, right, that a rider or pedestrian may, their level of comfort as they're experiencing their walk or their bike ride along a particular road. So we are looking at that as, as you were discussing earlier, there's a lot of different types of tools. Should the city be interested in lowering level of traffic stress on certain roads? So whole separate conversation, we'll get into it more in June, but there's a lot of different approaches that we can take.
So I had a couple of comments and I'll start by saying I lived through the various level of service and transportation concurrency debates of 17, 18, 19 and 20. So I have some of that history. I really intended to spend a few minutes looking at, and I would encourage others to do this, and I'll try to do this, looking at the ISQO plan, Bellevue plan and Redmond plan to see kind of how they approached it and what's there. I went far enough as to open all three and see that they were lengthy and that's where I ran out of time. So I do think that that's a valuable thing. One of the questions I have about how this is going to be developed is, and let me just say a little bit about this, but is there going to be an overarching goal or objective or set of goals and objectives? And the reason I ask that question is, this is one of those topics, at least for me, that it's challenging to decide between a lot of competing objectives. So, you know, where do you, the most basic one, of course, is where you spend the dollars. But sometimes it's even more than that, you know. Is the priority on non-motorized travel or motorized travel? Is the priority to provide a better transportation experience in people's car in the community? Because frankly, that's the kind of community where most everybody drives most everywhere. Or is it's not so focused on the car and focused on trails, bikes, e-bikes, pedestrians, you know, transit? I mean, how do you, how does the plan get developed in a way that balances the competing objectives of getting somebody as quickly as possible from north to south versus generating as few greenhouse gas emissions out of their vehicle as possible by managing the intersections appropriately for idle time? I mean, it just, it kind of goes on and on and on and there's limited resources. And I'm just curious how the plan gets developed in a way that says, here is our objective with this plan. So when we have to make a choice, which we always inevitably do, this is how we're going to use, this is what we're going to use as our guideline for making those choices. And I mean, when you start thinking about that, the list of those kinds of things gets into, you know, as Ajay talked about, the environmental issues, it gets into safety issues, it gets into the schools and how we deal with the school districts. It gets into our enforcement and policing in the community. And is that a choice that's a better use of our funds than, you know, a lot of these things tend to be hard, infrastructure dollars that we want to spend building things. Is that the right choice to make? How do you create a plan that provides guidance for us and the people developing the plan in how to make those choices and where to prioritize limited time, limited resource and limited dollars?
Great question, wow. I'll start by saying there's required components of the plan, right? Those have to be in there. We have to look at our level of service for vehicles, that is a requirement. What is new is taking a look at multimodal level of service and establishing guidelines for those. So I think you'll find as you start reading it and looking at it with other cities' plans, as well as the comprehensive plan, is that a lot of our priorities have shifted. They are focused on multimodal and those priorities also go hand in hand with some of our other recent plans that the city has recently adopted. Our Climate Action Plan, our Transit Plan, those are all shifting modes of transportation, right? And so one could argue if we had 15-minute headways on a bus and things like queue jumps or something like that to get up 228th and we were able to queue those buses through the traffic faster, that actually may be faster in the future than being a single occupant vehicle. So there's a lot of different ways to take a look at it. We'll always have competing priorities and those are hard discussions. But in terms of, I would say that it's mostly focused on providing multimodal infrastructure and tools and different things that we can consider that would align with our, of course, our comprehensive plan, our transit plan, our Climate Action Plan.
I guess one.
David, feel free to jump answer, I know.
One footnote I just make to that is that I also am going to be very interested to see, our city is very linear around 228th. And it's, so my view, maybe mine only, but my view is it's easy for us to get very consumed with what we do with that roadway because most people spend most of their time on it. And that could be a real detriment to all the other, however many hundred miles of roadway we have and other transportation and ways of getting around within the community. Because that's a hard thing, 228th is just a hard thing. That's the way the city, it organically grew around that spine and that's just, and we could spend the whole transportation plan, master plan, on 228th. And that would be unfortunate because there are other things that need to be done. But that's where most people spend most of their time. So I will be very interested to see how we, it's again, a case of balance, how we figure out, can we spend, you know, 50% on 228th and make any significant improvement or not? Or does it take 90% of our time and energy and funds? Or can we spend those dollars elsewhere and never improve 228th? And what's the outcome for the community because of that? It seems like in this community, we're very focused on one topic when it comes to getting around in your car and that's 228th. So I'm interested to see how we find out, you know, how we talk through and figure out how to focus on that or focus on other things. David's moving over on his, he's joining us. Oh, no, did I cause this? He's giving me that look.
No, mostly just getting ready for the next thing. But I will add that the one thing to keep in mind is, you know, you've raised some interesting points, you know. On the one hand, I'm hearing and thank you for recognizing that this is inherently difficult. And on the other part, you know, we have some really big topics. And the one thing to keep in mind here is that, you know, this doesn't, we want this to be the absolute best TMP we can get when we adopt it the first time. But it doesn't have to be absolutely perfect. And we anticipate that there will be many conversations to come around really big topics that we might not have the opportunity and ability to fully get our arms around with this first go at the TMP. And, you know, that's something that we've seen with other plans we've adopted. The Climate Action Plan, for example. Now we have a Sustainability Commission that's looking at it and assessing kind of where we got it right and where we might have missed something. And they're in the process of looking at how that might be revised already, right? So to keep that in mind as you work through this, you know, we're really, how long we've been, what we're going on, 25 years as a city. We're going into our Silver Jubilee here. And we have not had a transportation master plan. So think about that and what we've got in front of us, the timeframe we've got and what we can get done and really try to do our best job. But at the same time, understand that there are some really big topics that we're going to need to continue talking about into the future.
Thank you, David, and I can just expand on that too. We already are planning on a update to the TMP in 2025, right? So one of our other great things that we're working on is our Town Center SEIS. And any potential outcomes in that, of course, would need to be analyzed and reflected in the TMP as well. Anticipate that we'll need to continue the conversations with multimodal transportation into '25 for some of the areas of the TMP. And so that would be incorporated in that '25 update as well. We would like to, at some point, have either a separate bike and pedestrian plan or ideally roll that into the TMP, so that would come in 2025. So it is, we're really excited to have this first TMP go through. And then, of course, there'll be some conversations that continue into '25.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Sayan.
Is there another question, do some observations and a news that may be shocking to you? The traffic in city, believe it or not, based on the 2023 last year traffic, I received a copy of all those counts. The traffic throughout the city has been actually, instead of seeing an increase, is seeing some reduction. And some location, as much as 20%. When you look at some of the arterials, including Clahoney Drive percent, when you look at some of the arterials, including Clahoney Drive, including two-twenty-eight, including the Inglewood Drive. And I looked at all those numbers consistently showing that traffic volume has dropped substantially. This is twenty percent. That's a lot. Second, there's an article in today's Seattle Times, and they listed cities that has the least amount of growth as far as population and losing population. Sammamish is listed as one of the city with the actually least amount of growth comparing to the other cities in Puget Sound region. That was really shocking news, both as far as traffic volume to be less, and also the population to be not growing as much as we thought that it would be. It's today, today's Seattle Times.
Anybody else? I will say that part of the history in the city is the gap between facts and perception. And when it comes to traffic, that's probably at the top of the list. So, you know, I think that's interesting and fascinating stuff. And what the community will think about it, it may be different.
Well, some, some people, they may argue that the reason that you see some drop, it has to do with the COVID, number one, and number two, hybrid and working from the home. But when you look at the last five, five, six years every year, you see consistent reduction of the volume. It's not only the last two years, it's the last six, seven years. It's showing the numbers clearly.
Yeah.
Less.
Yes.
They're all using bicycles like Mike.
All right. Greg, Lindsay, Audrey, thank you for the discussion. I have a feeling we're gonna spend a lot more time together over the next few months. So looking forward to it.
Looking forward to it. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Next on our agenda is a director's report. Go ahead, Director David Pyle. Yeah, we're gonna need to extend for public comment. So wanted, somebody want to give us another fifteen minutes?
Still moved.
Second. Been moving a second to extend to eight forty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, thank you.
We'll keep this quick. So we're, we wanted to provide as part of the director's report this evening, an update on the status of the 2024 comprehensive plan and other planning efforts that go along with that. We've got quite a work plan ahead of us for the next few months, and wanted to do a brief recap and provide sort of an overview of how we think we're going to get to the finish line. The first finish line really is in July when you are, have a series of public hearings before sending some things on to city council. So just a quick update about the comprehensive plan is that the state requires a process to update the comprehensive plan by way of the Growth Management Act. It's prescribed. It's not something that, that we, is optional for the city. It needs to be completed by December thirty-first of 2024, and we must update and adopt development regulations that align with the plan. So it's not just the, the vision statement and the policies that go along with the plan, but it's also the enabling development regulations that, that are put in place to, to see that be implemented over time. With every update, there is usually a priority. And in this case, it is affordable and emergency housing. It's diverse housing, middle housing. We have also added at our election and economic development element. We have also taken it on ourselves to get a really good head start on a climate change and resiliency element, which is not required yet, but will be in five years. So we're doing great work on that, getting ahead of that. Really appreciate your, your work on helping us with that. One other thing that is really important to note is that the city historically has been what I call flat with regard to its zoning. It hasn't really had a vision for growth in the future. Instead, it has really just looked at today. We've had a future land use map that matches our zoning map identically, and there is not any identified area really for future growth as to how that might build out over time. So we're changing that, and we're, we're, we're going with a different approach to our future land use map and zoning. And if you have any questions on that, you know, feel free to reach out. That, I think, is one of the biggest changes that's happening with this comprehensive plan. The growth framework, we started this work back in 2019 when staff participated in the King County Buildable Lands Analysis or Urban Growth Capacity Study Analysis. We've worked since that point to develop a land capacity, which is adopted as part of the King County countywide planning policies. We worked with our, our neighbors and with King, within King County to come up with a growth target, which was added to the King County countywide planning policies. And subsequently, based on that growth target, we were provided by King County an affordable housing allocation, which was added to King County countywide planning policies as well. The process timeline that really, for, for the visible part of the comprehensive plan that, that you have seen is started really in the summer of 2022 when we kicked off the project. We've made it through a lot of conversation around land use and housing. We've held stakeholder engagement. And really, we're at the point now where we're in review of a plan. You've seen the first draft of the plan. We're going to be collating, or excuse me, coalescing all of the comments and edits into a new version of that, which you'll be getting here pretty soon. And we'll work through that, collect comment on that, and then bring back another version that you'll be able to take to a public hearing. And ideally, make a recommendation to the city council at the beginning of the summer here, and the city council will take that up beginning after their, their summer recess. In line with that, some upcoming key dates, we've got review of the draft set for draft two. Your discussion on that would be on June twentieth. Is that when we're gonna actually introduce that, right?
So we intend to release the draft ahead of the June twentieth meeting, similar to how we did it with the first meeting. We're targeting a June seventh, I believe the date is, to send you, again, a convio link ahead of time. You can make comments, review it, and then on June twentieth, we'll discuss those comments.
That's right. Thank you. We wanted to make sure you had two full weekends to review it, to not hurry it. Although you've seen the document, this is the revised version. Then we'll be going to city council on July sixteenth and providing an overview and status of the comprehensive plan, followed by the commission, again, taking this up with a public hearing on July twenty-fifth. Keep in mind that these dates are subject to change. Hopefully not, but they could change. Continuing down the line, you could see here how the, the city council then takes it up and runs with it, and ideally opens up public hearing on the comprehensive plan in December, which would allow them to wrap that up by the end of the year. We then would send that off to the State Department of Commerce, the Puget Sound Regional Council in King County. Really, the only agency that takes action on it is Puget Sound Regional Council, who provides review and certification. The other agencies really are providing courtesy review and, and helping identify if it's in alignment with their, their own policies and programs. Comp plan related projects, as mentioned previously, there are quite a few. The Critical Areas Ordinance is one that you're familiar with. This is on a consistent timeline with the comprehensive plan. We, we feel this, this project has moved along quite well. Actually, we had a farmer's market booth on this yesterday, if any of you had the chance to stop by and visit with the staff. We will be bringing development regulations, draft development regulations forward to you here very soon. I can't remember when the next meeting on that is. I think it's the sixth of, actually, yeah, it's the sixth of June. We'll be bringing forward the, the draft development regulations for your review. The deadline on that is the end of the year. We also have many bills, and these are probably the, the more challenging to implement through the development regulations component, HP eleven-ten, thirteen-thirty-seven, SB sixty-fifteen. These really relate to the legislature's direction that the state, the region and the county and its cities all take a different approach to providing housing. It requires two units per lot, four units if two are affordable, six of nine middle housing types, which we've already received feedback on, has some limitations on parking. And this is really is a, a very different development paradigm that we'll be seeing going forward. So we're gonna have some discussions on that in the coming weeks. We're working with our consultant on those, those model development regulations now, and hoping to come back with some very good examples of how, of specific properties in the city that if you were to see them develop or redevelop, what that might look like under these rules. Also, as you just heard, Transportation Master Plan, as they described in their presentation, it will make up volume two of the transportation element. And it does need to be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And you'll note, when you start to see these documents come forward, that we will be very specifically citing which portion of the Transportation Master Plan is considered part of the comprehensive plan and which is not. The issue there is that you cannot update those items that are part of the comprehensive plan as freely as you can those that are not. There are specific rules around when and how you update your comprehensive plan. So if we're adopting the TMP as part of the comprehensive plan, that binds us. So we're going to be very clear what is part of the comp plan and what is not. Non-comp plan related projects, we've got the Town Center Plan Amendment. That is ongoing. That is scheduled for completion in the spring of 2025. That effort really is focused on increasing the delivery of diverse and affordable housing types, and also cleaning up the code and plan to eliminate barriers and streamline permitting. That plays right into SB fifty-two-ninety, which is citywide. It's a citywide development regulation overview to try and identify where barriers might be to, to permitting. And we are given new timelines by the state that we're obligated to conform to. You'll be hearing more about this soon. It's, it's really fairly simple, but it has a, a big impact on our, our work plan internally. It's mostly getting our development review process in alignment so that we are able to make each step more efficient, so that we can provide comments and ultimately deliver a permit in a shorter timeframe. As far as process alignment goes, you can see here that really, we, you know, we're taking on the middle housing and development regs, and that, that falls into the comprehensive plan. Critical areas fall into the comprehensive plan, and the transportation master plan ultimately fall into the comprehensive plan. Ultimately, at the end of the year, we're left with a very large bundle of policy and code changes that would be implemented in the new year. And we're working with our, our code publishing platform and all of our various media, social, our, want to say the, the city's website where we host our comprehensive plan, our codes, all those things. We're looking at a very large push at the end of the year to update all that information. It's, it's a big undertaking. So there's also that to consider.
I would just chime in and offer that maybe I made sort of an imperfect graphic. But the, the idea here is just to show that there are three separate lines that will all, sure. It, it's meant to show that there are three separate lines of project work that will fold into the comprehensive plan. And, and yeah, I, I take your point, the timing's a little off. But the, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council, as you saw in the previous presentation, to, to the city council. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, so currently, the city does allow ADUs. However, they are very constrained. They can only be a certain size. You have to live in either the primary unit or the ADU. You have to have all these, you have extra parking spaces. There needs to be a certain type of access and orientation to the street. There's, you know, they're, they're difficult to see built. We don't have many of them underway unless you're in Mark's neighborhood. Which I think are the three that are being built in the city this year. So, so we, we wonder if they're all with permits. So we're gonna send code enforcement out there now. But what, what happened is the state passed a bill that requires that cities allow two ADUs per, per lot, or per, per lot, in addition to a primary unit. And it, it also removed the, the limitations or restrictions that we had been imposing. And it also allows for ADUs to be condominiumized and sold, which is a huge change. So what we're likely to see is, is, I don't anticipate a tidal wave of ADUs coming in because you need a willing builder or property owner that wants to do that. However, we do anticipate that people will be building more ADUs and that they will be probably selling them as starter homes, which is a really interesting concept because it offers somebody who might want to move back, move back to the city after going to college, or, you know, move to the city in the first place, or downsize the ability to find a unit that, that fits their needs.
I also think, I also think people are gonna do it to help them afford a house in Sammamish because they can rent out their backyard and pay half the mortgage. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, process question for this next version of the comp plan that we'll get. Is that gonna be redlined, which could be incredibly confusing, or is it just straight update?
It, it will be a straight update. So it's, it will be a compilation of the commission's comments, our stakeholders' comments, the internal staff review comments, and it, in, that's it. That's a pretty big group. And it will include volume two. So you'll get volume one and volume two minus the TMP. And you'll have the opportunity to work through that. And, you know, if, if you want to meet with staff to talk through anything that you find in there, or have us walk you through what changes were made, we will be doing that as part of the meeting, but we would be happy to meet individually or as, you know, in groups of two or three if you'd like to.
Can I follow up on John's question? One problem that I have, I hope I'm the only one, and I brought it to Evan's attention. The first draft was informed that the font was awfully small. I went to five hundred percent, and I still had that difficulty to read. Is there any way that you can ask Jeff and his group to make it in a way that is reader-friendly? Am I the only one that had that problem?
We'll, we'll make sure to look at that. Yeah, no, that, that's a.
Five hundred percent.
It's a, it's a good question. It's, you know, the convio platform is a window within a window. So that, that makes it a bit challenging because you, you might be changing the, the, the zoom on the, on the, on the window, but it doesn't actually zoom that window.
No, it does zoom it, but it zoomed even with five hundred percent.
Five hundred.
It's a format. I don't have any problem with most of the documents that I see either coming from staff or from the consultant. That was the only one that I was so frustrated in, that I could not really go through all the pages because I couldn't read it.
Yeah, we'll look at that. You know, in part, it might be because of the convio platform. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks, David. Let's do public comment. This is, at this point, public comment about the Transportation Master Plan because that was the only agenda item. We haven't had public comment on yet. Would anybody like to make public comment about the Transportation Master Plan? Mr. Eastman going first?
Yeah, I've been here a few times. Yeah, I, I was actually, that was part of my comment tonight. I also lived through the Mark Baughan, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. A few of us in the room all lived through that. And ultimately, in two thousand twenty, the wheels just kind of fell off, and the TMP was kind of the culminating item where the carpet just got pulled out and everything just went away. So the city's been doing a great job of trying to rebuild everything, but there's a lot of big stuff we could be taking on with this TMP. And when I take on things when I'm trying to rebuild or I'm busy or I'm stressed, I typically like to take on little tiny projects, just make me feel good about myself, like I'm worthwhile and I can get it done. I tell my kids the same thing. They have job lists to do on Saturdays. Hey, you know, get the easiest one done first. I've heard the same thing about getting out of debt, you know, attack the smallest debt, you know, do this, do that, you know, something that can make you feel like you can do it. do this, do that, you know, something that can make you feel like you can do it. So we got to get this machine fired back up here in Sammamish with a TMP in place and then working. So I would like to see some momentum projects in the TMP stuff that are just easy wins that we can go attack and we can feel good about ourselves. We can practice the public process. The planning commission can weigh in, the city council. We get all the input we need, it's funded, and then we go build it. We say, oh, wow, that looks really good. Let's do some more of those. So even if it means bringing off pieces, I know Sahali Way is coming up. That's big. Are there some things we can break out of that that we can get done immediately just to make ourselves feel good? That'd be great. So if we could add some momentum projects into the TMP, awesome. As far as, I'm going to try to phrase this in the right way. I don't want to encourage everyone to go ride their bikes on sidewalks, but there is something to it. When I ride from Town Center, I ride on the east side of 228. The sidewalk's huge. It's like, yeah, that's massive. And you feel safe, like, I don't want to ride in a bike road lane on 228 next to the cars. I want to ride with a curb and a big old sidewalk. And I'm a leisure rider. I'm not Mr. Bresko here. I just, you know, where am I? You know, I just, just little, you know, just take it easy. Leisure ride. Same thing on from Redmond. When the Sammamish River Trail connects to the 520 trail, you ride on the sidewalk. And Burt Gilman in Ballard, where there's missing gap, you ride on the sidewalk. And I'm like, maybe we're onto something like this is, this is better. Like, I get a little nervous riding next to the white line when cars are zooming by me. Inglewood Hill Road, you know, I might ride down on that bike lane. But if I'm riding up and I got to pedal hard, I'm not, I don't have a lot of faith that I can stay within that white line. Like, I'd rather ride on the sidewalk and have a curb protect me. So if there's a choice to like put a bike lane in or maybe put in just a wider sidewalk, like, I personally prefer maybe a wider sidewalk. So that's something to consider. And then on the sidewalks, like down on the parkway and some other places, like, yeah, you see a new house get built and you're like, okay, that's great, brand new sidewalk. Yeah, maybe the rest of us will all get sidewalks. But then the house like starts to age and it's not new anymore. And the sidewalk like has never been used, so it's just like covered in moss. And, you know, it's weathered. And then all of a sudden, it like, you know, was a little out of place before, but it was new and out of place. Now it's old and out of place. And it does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood. It's almost a detriment to the character of the neighborhood. So I started this off by saying, hey, let's keep things simple and just attack stuff. But maybe once we get this machine running and oiled and ready to go, maybe we could fire up like a sidewalk banking fund where, I don't know, maybe a developer can pay 75% of the, what he would spend on putting a sidewalk in somewhere where it is not needed into a bank that would either put sidewalks in a whole neighborhood or fill in missing paths or trails or just have some sort of mitigation, transferring a sidewalk to areas that actually need it. So that's all. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Thanks, James. Mary? Been moved in second to send to nine. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Thank you.
Good, that way I don't have to talk so fast. Mary Wickers, Sammamish since 2000. I love the last thing that James said because those are those weird little things where there's a house built and you kind of like run into it and maybe somebody parks there. And then there's other places where you need three of them built that were never built. And since it's so small and it's so expensive, it'll never happen. So on transportation, thank you, Said, for having brought up the traffic counts because the last time I remember traffic counts getting presented was about April of 2017 or 18 because they were like, oh, we're not going to give you the new ones because then we have to mess with the model and this will all work. So I know it's changed because I drive around. It's, I see it's changed. So thank you for doing that. I was also terrified with the years of the TMP where we all went through it. We just had really large projects doing things like five lane roads and stuff, which just didn't fit. So this is maybe very naive of me, but I'm going to try to combine my critical areas with complete streets with things I've learned online. So there's a guy, Chuck Marone, who's with Strong Towns. They make a lot of things for middle housing and how to make things work better. And he talks about street diets because he says if you build a great big sea of asphalt, which that's what Andrew Zager, the former city engineer, used to call it. If it's just lots of asphalt with wide stuff with two sidewalks on the side, people drive really fast. And when they drive really fast, it's very unsafe for pedestrians. You're trying to get out there. And the fastest kids, the fastest things I've been seeing going is I went to Safeway yesterday and there are kids ripping around on their e-bikes, going about 40 and popping wheelies. So that's a little bit of a safety problem. But I understand with that 12-foot wide sidewalk, the Eastlake High School kids, they run through their PE and you can fit quite a few of them on it. It's incredibly big. And I just think for the cost of sidewalks, it'll be hard to do that. But we have so many places in the city where, on the maps that I bring, you can see we have critical areas. And like I've heard John Bachman say over and over again, people don't walk on the sidewalks where I live, they walk in the street. So it almost seems like instead of having the complete streets, which you have to have to be able to get grant money for like Transportation Improvement Board, it seems like if you, like, like the Lewis Thompson Road and the Inglewood Hill Road, because of the critical areas, you can't put sidewalks on both sides and have bike lanes on both sides, but you can on one. And then what you need are just safe crossing places. Same thing with Sahali. We don't need like a five lane thing going up there. There are certain places, I think along Sahali, most of them, they're all developments. So there's only certain places people would come out. And where they connect, you need to be able to cross there. And then if you really only have sidewalk on one side, then you have room for another bike lane or something. So I don't know if that would fly, probably Said or somebody. I'm more stormwater and stuff. But it just seems like with the way the plateau is, with it up on the top, and the reason 228 is the way it is, is that's on the public land survey system. Of every mile, you get stuff and that's where you put all your utilities. And then the schools actually donated the land so that you can have schools that built there. So the reason 228 is the way it is, is that's the way the Wild West grew. But it just seems to me that we could do different things. So I really liked what James said about having places people could connect. Or I also used to be a trampoliner and it kind of hurt my neck. So for about 10 years, I had shooting pains. And I couldn't walk on sidewalks or asphalt because it just physically hurt. So I would go walk at Eastlake High School when my kids were doing stuff there because I could walk on the turf. But a lot of times, like I remember Karen Moran saying, it has to be sidewalks. And then I remember Pam Stewart saying, no, we need soft paths. And the answer is, we need both. So if there's some way we can integrate that connectivity instead of always having the complete streets, I really don't think you need sidewalks on both sides. And then that way, if it's only on one side, people will get more yards that they can play in and do things in. So I just think the kind of the whole thing with the complete streets needs to be relooked at. And then if you are doing this, streets, then everything gets too wide. And then you have to narrow it down for street diets to get people to slow down. So I think balancing all those competing things is important. So anyway, I'm just rambling. Those are ideas I've had in my head for a long time and whispered on by what James said and what you guys said. So thanks.
Thanks, Mary. How about online?
We have one attendee waiting to be promoted, and that is Mr. Paul Stigney.
Hello, planning commissioners and staff consultants. Lots of effort and time into the presentation tonight. Appreciated that. I could take a ton of time with this or since I have done so much online already, all I'm going to do is just make a couple high-level summary points. And these are my I statements. I don't like to speak like a Sith Lord in 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 absolutes. These, these are what I think is true. I think there was a process that achieved a a growth target that was off base. I think that 2,000 affordable housing, when King County did that, I watched the most recent Growth Management Planning Council meeting of King County. And the chair of that committee was literally shocked that cities couldn't do market rate above. They were just trying to get affordable housing. And GMPC is starting a process that's called reconciliation. And Snocolum is going through it and partially Redmond. In my opinion, I think that affordable housing only, 2,100 units, is extremely hard to do. I found it interesting at a couple meetings recently, it was mentioned that the zero to 30% was not being targeted, but yet that's roughly 60 to 70% of our target. And I assert from from conclusions of studying a multitude of roughly 20 various factors that are some extremely quantified, others partially quantified, that our community is really, really short on housing to meet our own needs over time for economic and demographic and workforce in the 500 to a million two-ish range. And it's getting more out of balance. I'm just getting the 2022 information from the city, or excuse me, excuse me, from the U.S. Census and PUMS data for higher income. And it's staggering how much change has happened in a year in terms of the undersupply in relative to incomes in under a million two and over. So my takeaway is, do, and each of you search for this. I appreciated the comment at the start of this meeting by these steel to 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 search your own mind. Do you really believe that affordable housing only is correct for the city? If you had the chance to do it over, would you increase the number and meet local market rate housing? Not for the region, not to be selfish, but for our own community. We're extremely short in those price ranges that I talked about. And and the TMP, in my opinion, would be radically different if you were looking for 2,000 affordable houses that didn't have much chance to go as opposed to housing in centers. And Mary mentioned Chuck Marone. He and Sightline, he's with Strong Towns. Sightline, Urban Land Institute have all shown that well-designed, complete, compact and connected centers can actually reduce traffic below what's generated in those centers. We have opportunity to meet housing needs that I think are 90% market rate or more, including in inclusionary zoning. So it's time, in my opinion, to get housing right, not from a election point of view, but from a direction point of view. And in our country, major direction that has been important is like having a national defense, having women's right to vote. There's been, you know, certain topics that have transcended political ideology that gets into power. I think housing balance to meet need over life is in that category. And instead of waiting 10 or 15 years to do it, it's 10 or 15 years overdue. So, you know, that was in my first comp plan draft. Go back and check that out. I'm happy to chat with any of you. Look at the fiscal sustainability task force public comments for all the details. But I think it's time to have an informed discussion on what's the right mix of housing that benefits our community, done mostly in centers, not much in in all the neighborhoods. So that's just a recap of a lot that I've been working on over the last few years. And I believe it's not in the community's interest. It it may sound good, but I don't think affordable only over the next 10-year cycle is the right way to go. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else? Anything else from staff? Evan? Nope. All right. Would someone move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved second to adjourn. All those in papers say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.